Yeah, he's excited. He's excited to see.
All this main miller groups, they count the ten and agenda Monday, September ninth, two thousand nine. Culture order.
Patrick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Agenda approval consent, agenda approval minutes of eight, twelve, two thousand twenty-four, approval of financial statements as of eight thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Approval of bills that presented and approval of liquor licenses. Nimble as one says.
You want a motion?
Move by.
Motion.
I'll say it.
Second by Patrick, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Okay, four. S L K holdings, request for kit, maybe extension. Sadie?
She's just out.
Oh, okay. Do you all come up for Microsoft, Sadie? Front and center.
Hello?
Hi, Sadie.
Let me just state my address. Um, I think you guys all should have my letter that I sent to Sarah and Matt last week. Um, so apologies for a delay. Uh, we probably read the letter, thought, why didn't she ask for the extension a while ago? Um, sincerely, just kind of lost track of what we had put in the tip for that deadline. Um, we hired our demo contractor last October and they committed to a forty-five day completion date, which was supposed to be December eleventh in there. Um, and then they didn't finish until March, so it was a very frustrating process. Um, and then, so we delayed to get our engineer in there and had a framer lined up that could have done a lot of winter work for us. And then they got busy as just a lot, some of the relationships that we thought were going to utilize didn't end up working out. And then just we ran into, you know, as expected, living room building like that, but some more repairs and structural things that we needed to take care of. Um, including like the, all the new plaster inside on the brick. So just things that have come up that we didn't anticipate. And then, um, we had other delays with the frame, the other framer that we hired over the summer. So now, um, we have those structural corrections done. We have our bathrooms framed. Um, they just framed up the barn or storage closet. So basically, all the interior framing is done. Um, just this, the rest of this month, our, um, electrical mechanical contractor needs to come in and finish all of our roughens that we can drywall trim. So probably got everybody staged out now. Got a painter lined up. I think the only thing we don't know who we're going up right now is calling. So, um, I feel good about our schedule. Um, so we're looking to have, be substantially complete in November, which is, um, for my. She needs to sign off on our tip of our first tip.
Well, I, first of all, thank you for taking care of that old burnt building. You know, uh, it's, it's nice to see that because I think we got almost all the buildings, if not all of them occupied up town, you know, and, and coming in and taking two of them, you know, and working on them. Definitely appreciate it. You touched on something I was going to touch on too, is like, how come we didn't see it sooner? But you realize that, so, uh, that's fine, you know, nothing deal, but it's, it's nice to see the building being put to use and that it's going to be put to use. So personally, uh, I don't have any issue with any kind of an extension. On the year. So I would, I would motion you to give the extension.
Thank you.
Move by Carl Boss, second by Dolly. How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Thank you, Sadie.
Thanks, Sadie. Appreciate you.
Okay, we need to do all these self demotions. Also, Forrest, you're up, please, five.
Forrest Oliver, should have been straight Kim. Uh, so there's four items on the agenda. First is a pay student for the Womboldt base three addition. Uh, just having some conversations, we've had a lot of conversations with seed members over the last couple of weeks. They are, at this point, three months behind when they were supposed to be completed with the project. We have a walkthrough scheduled for Wednesday morning with myself, the contractor, Ben from S M U and Jim. I think some members of seed are going to join us for that walkthrough. And the idea is to say, contractor, here's all the stuff you need to finish. When are you going to have it done? Because we got to get this stuff done now. As out there before the meeting and we've been harping on them to get some things done and they're still not done, but they're, these are priorities. Um, we're still holding about two hundred fifty thousand dollars of money from the contract. So we still have a substantial amount owed them still. And, uh, you know, we were talking about we can assess liquidated damages and we need to get the project done. And then we'll talk about that with the council on what those amounts might be. And then the council at that point can decide to do that or not do that or, or. Options on for the council, uh, probably better be at the October meeting.
What's their, uh, excuse or reason for?
They're, they're out there.
The weather, can it?
No, it's, it, we had a pretty wet spring that put them behind, but, you know, these days been pretty beautiful. They have been out there working. I don't want anybody to think that's where you've been gone, but yeah, they're just, just not getting it done.
You said, I think at that seed meeting, you said that they, I mean, they account for that. So it's not like they.
Yeah, that's right.
They have a rain day, um, it takes away from their deadline. They have, that was all built in, so they, they had time last fall.
Right. Yeah, it's not a working day contract like a V O P would be. It's a calendar day contract and that calendar day builds in the winter. It builds in normal rain. Now, they may argue it was wetter than normal, but they can argue that. I don't need to argue that.
So my concern is, is if you go out there and do a walkthrough, that's all well and good, you know? That doesn't have anything to do with it. You can say, get it done, get it done, but haven't we been saying that?
Yeah, but the threat of liquidated damage, you don't.
Well, that's what I mean. That's what, what would add some teeth to it.
Yes, and, and that's what will be costing them out on that same.
I know, uh, I had kind of looked at the idea of just tabling the pay thing, you know? Even though they got the work done, we're not denying that, but we're just tabling it until we can see what we're going to do. Um, I don't know if the, uh, liquidated damages might have a little bit more bite to it.
It would. I mean, holding twenty-eight thousand, we, you know, we brought a quarter million.
I've been on.
At, I don't know that that's gonna do much. I mean, my recommendation would be to pay the twenty-eight.
Pay twenty-eight and then start looking at liquidated damages. That'd be.
Yeah, they have to get, you know, before I can present something to council, they need to get done. So that's part of why I don't have something to present to yet.
Right. I, you're kind of alluding to like next month. I mean, we have a partial payment up. So like, is the cutoff at the quarter million where we don't, like October, another partial payment?
Yeah, but the quarter million is, is retaining each.
That is the whole retain.
Yeah.
So when, when would we start, like, estimating, you know, the liquidated damages? Would that be after the walkthrough then?
This, this should, uh, my anticipation is that will be at the October council.
Okay, all right.
So we're going to have to have four different motions on.
Need a motion.
I have one, one more question too. Where that, uh, if it comes down to where we cannot dig this year, we would then push all that, that essentially their completion date, we would see that as spring?
They'll get.
Because we are out.
They'll get their work done this. I, I would think they'll get their work done this year yet. It's not going to hold over.
I mean, just as, as a city, we're missing out on a lot of income coming in because instead of, oh, we might dig five houses this year, we could have dug fifteen.
Right, and that's where that conversation about liquidated damages comes into play is what are we losing out in tax revenue? Because we're not getting the homes built now versus later. And that's where Matt and I need to have, kind of put our heads together on what that value might be.
I will, uh, I will make the motion to, do you have any other question?
I just got a quick question on the sanitary sewer improvements. Does any of these improve that issue that you pointed out to us, Jim? Where you were having some damage done to one that was leaking that was causing issues with yours?
Yes, it's in, you've already approved that change order. Change order number one for down here.
Okay, so it was that, okay.
Yes, that's, that's number C.
C.
Okay, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the partial payment for, uh, nightmare.
I'll say it.
Second by Patrick, how do you vote?
Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Okay, B, Womboldt base three, final five.
So, a couple of things. We met with you, the, it's basically changing the width of the public utility easements on some of the lots out there. We got a meeting that some of the other utilities can value those types. And they said, boy, we'd rather like to have a wider easement in certain spots. And so we changed the width of the easements on some of the lots. That's really the only change. It may look a lot different, if you're noticing that, because we had a switch in land surveyors. And of course, one land surveyor thinks things need to look different than another one. So it looks a little different, but the same information.
Question on those easements. Uh, I know I talked to Jim about easements. It was you. We talked about people having a certain amount, like, uh, utilities having a certain, like, you can put stuff down here, so it's just not haphazard.
Right.
Is that?
That's what this is.
Is that what that is? I mean, so it's not.
They have to stay within that, that we call the P U, public utility easement. And Coon Valley has to stay within.
Within a certain thing, within that. Okay, that's, okay, okay.
They can't go out wandering through the middle of lots.
Exactly, right, okay. I'll move to that one.
I'll say it.
Second by Patrick, how do you vote?
Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal. Okay, C?
So this, uh, C is a different contract. That's with Vision Sewer. They're doing the sanitary sewer rehabilitation, mostly on the south side of town. Kind of related to Womboldt, it's kind of packaged financially with that, but it's really a different contract. It's to get the inflow and infiltration out of the existing sanitary sewer system. So that we have capacities in the gravity sewers for this new Womboldt addition. Uh, so this is just a partial payment estimate number two to Vision Sewer for the work they've done, uh, to date. And it's an amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. They're just getting started. Uh, they're twenty percent done.
Next motion?
Move in a second, how do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
And D?
So Vision Sewer, as a city, we did not televise all the sanitary sewers. It was ahead of time. It was going to cost, I don't know, round numbers, forty, fifty thousand dollars to televise everything. So we said to the contractor, let's televise everything as part of the contract that you have. And if we find any issues, we'll deal with them then. So the Vision Sewers televised all the sewers on the south side of town. We found some sewers that were on the maps, were eight, that ended up really being tens. And we found some sewers that were twelve, ended up being ten. So there's a little bit of a change order for this because of the pipe size changes, but that's a pretty minor part of it. The big thing is we found three spots where they cannot lung. Um, so, just so everybody can kind of see what we're doing, like this, there are, these are photos from inside the sewer. With a little robot that went up the sewer pipe and took these pictures. And I think you've seen, you've seen these.
What, what is that for? Is that clay tile?
That's clay, yeah, your sewers on the south side are all clay that put in, in the fifties, sixties.
Forties.
Forties. And so over sixty, seventy years that some of these clay tiles have shifted and broken. So this is, these are showing, uh, you know, tiles broken so bad that we can't get through them with a liner, so we need to dig them up. And so that's the, the biggest change with this, uh, this change order. Uh, you know, because we're looking at change order amount of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And a big chunk of that, the ninety thousand of that is these point repairs.
On page, the last page, what's in the two?
So that is a, uh, tried to do a liner from inside to make that repair quite a few years ago. And it just didn't, there's too much shifting going on, it didn't hold up.
How deep is that sewer?
Uh, they're, they're just normal fifty, twenty.
They're not bad. They're probably anywhere from twelve to fifteen.
Okay. Does that know deeper costs a lot of money?
Yeah.
So, yeah. Okay.
Now, we do have one additional point repair possibly where we have, do we know who?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We need to figure out the cost on that. They can decide if they want to fix it themselves or if they want the contractor to fix it.
Okay, I do have a cost for that.
Okay, perfect.
I'll get that too.
I'll get it to Pat.
Okay. I'll leave you alone. I have, so that means.
That's S M U's, yeah.
S M U board a electrical line through the bottom of one of the, of one of the sanitary sewers. So there's a camera and you can see the conduit bottom, so, yeah, oops. So, um, so that's, that's one not included because we don't feel that should be the city's.
Right. So is, uh, utilities going to take care of that then? Or what are we going to do with that or?
They were wanting more information. They were wanting the costs and stuff associated with it.
Uh, and just have the contractor that's going to fix this?
I hope that's the avenue they go because timelines, timeline, they want to start putting liner in the pipe by the end of this month. So, and it's, it's right in the middle of Division Street, which doesn't help. But at least, at least it's up here on the north end, so it's wider, so we can get around it. But it's virtually ten feet south of the manhole. I mean, it's been pretty easy to pull the lid and measure it and say, yep, it's eleven feet deep, we better be thirteen. And then that, you know?
Yeah.
Patrick?
Second.
Second by Russell? How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Okay, public works.
Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
You want to talk about? Okay, first thing looks like the steps out front, as everybody's noticed for quite some time. The nose of the stairs is broke off due to the original contractor putting the rebar too close to the face of the concrete. Anytime concrete, uh, rebar is exposed to concrete, it swells because it corrodes. And it's broke the nose off. Condition. So talked to Ash, we requested bids from local contractors, received two bids. One from Sackett Construction for five thousand and one from Scott Concrete for ninety-five hundred. So we have, with Ash's blessing, moved forward with, uh.
We didn't get the.
We didn't get Scott. Oh. Sorry.
But he was ninety-five hundred.
He was ninety-five hundred, yes, and, uh, Sackett Construction was five thousand. So we moved forward with, uh, Sackett Construction to replace them. And his thought was that he would probably be here in mid to late October, depending on his schedule. But he was, he was pretty certain that he could have it done before, uh, before frost or anything like that. So you would have a motion on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
Motion, I heard that.
Second. Cal, one, second by Dolly? How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Tree removal bids? Yeah, I've got a few trees that, uh, are over, over the height that I can reach with our equipment. So we requested bids for those, received free bids. Uh, K and A removal at a bid of thirty-nine fifty. Uh, West Central Tree Service for a price of forty-eight hundred. And Swinger Lawn Care and S L S Tree Service at fifty-seven hundred. So, uh, as Ash and I went through these, we agreed to award a bid to K and A Removal at a price of thirty-nine fifty.
Need a motion?
Second by Morgan? How do you vote?
Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
That's Jim.
That's Jim.
Sarah Stewart, Rescue Department, Sean?
Yes, sir. Um, so you know, we've, we've got that, start with the, um, the ambulance. We've got that ambulance out there that we replaced. Um, well, three years ago, we started that process. Uh, now that we're kind of in a position that we can be sure, um, that's a good time to get rid of it. The, I had the idea to donate it to a local, um, fire department so that they could perhaps benefit from that. So I got some valuations on what that might be. Otherwise, you know, a closed bid process. Um, I did end up talking to, uh, Arrow Manufacturing, uh, who also would buy that. They buy it for the box, not necessarily for the chassis. Uh, and he said that he sees a lot of those going for three to eight thousand, which is exactly kind of where I had, um, put that at. He said without actually seeing the box, he wouldn't be able to give me anything more specific on the number. But, um, you know, I think, I think the community benefit here and then I did, um, talk to them just to make sure they were even interested in that, given, uh, you know, T and stuff like that.
Yes, sir. Did you say who, who are looking at donating? I mean, I know it says Dexter in here a little bit, but are you talking about donating it to Dexter?
Yes.
Okay, that, maybe I missed it too, so I apologize. I'm a little fluggy.
Not, don't think I said that tonight, it was just in the, uh, in the information. So, you know, I think that, um, they're trying to expand their services and given that they're right next to us, they help us a lot and we help them. And, and that really just, I think, makes for a, a stronger community, you know? Heaven forbid we get into a situation where we need additional resources, you know? Have that tornado been further north or something like that? We need all the help we can get and, and giving them, giving that to somebody that close really could help us in, in those situations. And it, it helps them and we have a lot of people that, um, like myself, they're part of both communities. And I think that that really gives them an angle to really grow their service.
What, what kind of service do they offer right now for their, like, EMS?
Um, and Eli's here tonight, if you want to ask him, but I can answer that question more or less. But, um, right now they have an E M T level service. Uh, they partner with Dallas County, so they don't do any transporting to the hospital. Um, but in talking with him, they're looking at going to like advanced level, which would include some more invasive procedures and kind of just helps get those, the help, more advanced help to the patients that would need that.
All right. I just had no idea, so.
Yeah, they run on, you know, for a year, a handful of E M Ts and E M Rs in the next few years to even build.
But they don't have, uh, an ambulance right now for anything, right?
Well, yes, correct. They have a truck and it has, um, some cabinets on it and then you can sit inside. It's kind of like a topper or in style, so you can go sit inside. But even things as simple as like firefighter rehab, you know, it's, it's. Could you use it for that? Do they? I'm sure they do, but, um, you know, is it really, it's not really designed for, for that kind of stuff or as an actual ambulance, which would be very helpful.
Okay. Because, you know, I have no issue donating it to a local, uh, entity like that. Um, when I saw donate it, I wasn't sure, but until I saw this, I was like, oh, no, that's, that's not bad, you know? So.
Would this impact our call revenue?
I don't think so. Um, since they don't, uh, transport patients, uh, it wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't respond to a call and then take a patient because we can't or, or in lieu of us or anything like that. So no, we wouldn't, um, have any less patients or anything like that.
And would they, like, for them, how would, how would they utilize this? And what, what kind of positive would this be to have that? Do they have the staff or I'm just?
Yeah, they, they've been adding staff. Kind of helps, you know, if you get into a situation where having, being able to work inside the ambulance is a lot, you know, they, for example, they had somebody that ended up choking and eating, or at the Rusty Duck, being able to get them into the ambulance really helps, um, facilitate some of those procedures that you're doing on the floor of a, of a restaurant is not really ideal.
Or sitting in that, sitting in a truck.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to come up?
Well, if, if you have questions for the Dexter side or have to.
Yeah, absolutely.
By the way, come on up.
It's, it, I see, it's.
Sorry, not to talk to you.
No, 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 I didn't want to be rude. That's fair. What's your name? My name's Yuki at Bill, I'm the EMS captain of Red Dexter.
Okay.
I see it as giving them a, a, a start, you know, kind of a boost to, to grow their service. You know, because, you know, definitely a lot smaller. So they are getting a new, uh, um, so I think it would go well in there. I mean, it's new to them, uh, and we've partnered together. Let me ask you this, so if there's a mass casualty event, would you be able to take people?
Yes.
In that, okay, so that was one big thing.
That's a gray area, but like even, uh, Greenfield, for example, um, we were asked to transport and I said, I'm not even set up for it.
Okay, so something like that.
Yep.
It's going to provide, you know, not necessarily A L S.
Mm-hmm.
But you're going to be able to get them to someplace and get them on their way, so.
Yeah. They kind of in the, in our neutral zone, if you will, and, and we're taking somebody to the hospital. But they've got three or four other people that were in the car, you know, then they can take them over to the McDonald's or something. Whereas the equipment they have right now really doesn't, because, you know, you get the officers or whoever, I mean, they can get it done, but that kind of helps. That's just one scenario.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
Having ambulance.
If I could speak to the, I don't know who was over here, somebody asked about the, the patient revenue.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we have six on our roster. We, um, even if we got to ten, I don't know that as a volunteer basis, we have the manpower to transport on a regular basis. We would just be, because all of our volunteers have full-time jobs as well, so we would just be burning them out. And it's hard enough to find volunteers. So, um, I don't, from my perspective, we're not even looking at the transport aspect of this at this point. Um, it will be, if that ever happened, it would be years and years down the road. And we're not looking to take anything from.
No, and I can see this as, um, we, when we talk about the county thing and stuff like that, this is another one five miles away, you know?
Probably more equipment, more, more stuff. You don't have to set them up in a truck. Until you wait for somebody to come that can do like you or Dallas County, you can, you know, um, who's ever close, but it just gives you that, that ability. I mean, really to have them, they can say, they're going to be more comfortable, you know?
Absolutely.
I would not want to sit up and have somebody pumped on my chest. I don't want anybody pumping on my chest again, but, but I'm going to be laying down.
And. And our current track is a ninety-nine. It's, it's Seaman's Days. Um, we were going to actually start looking at the process of seeing what it would take to get one. Um, so when Sean called, I was very interested.
So do, do we just need a motion?
Yeah.
Um, uh. So I will make that motion.
Second by Dolly? How do you vote? Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of Dexter Fire Rescue Armor Citizens, I want to say thank you. I really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You got an update, Sean?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, to let everybody know, um, especially kind of with the, we did, the county is moving forward with their stuff as far as, uh, going to the vote. Um, they're, sounds like they've got a, uh, what do I want to say? A consulting firm to help get the word out and go, um, you know, kind of show people, give them some information, pitch it out to the voters and help with that. So that's going to be coming up here pretty soon. Otherwise, um, we're just trying to work through some other things and then, you know, hopefully we can get, uh, a couple people, a couple more people in here. But really staffing is doing okay. Been a little tired, but not anything that's too crazy, so. Have any problems filling the schedule or anything like that, so.
Thank you so much, Greg.
Thank you.
Hey, financial advisor Chip?
Chip Schultz, Department of Public Finance, uh the purpose of the first agenda item about the franchise fee is just to update the council on where we're at on those discussions, follows on the, uh you've got a draft of the agreements for both the, both of the REC. Uh it's just a draft and there are a couple decision points, not that you need to make tonight, but at a future day, requested to be formal action on the, on each of the franchise agreements, uh some of the decision points and Mike, so we had a call on August thirtieth with Christine Stone with Hallers, Mike Cabal, uh and Ash and Sarah, and we worked through, there's there's some decision points on termination language, not to be made tonight, but in the future, termination language, um if you want to have any, uh assume that you would want to go with a twenty-five year term, that's a maximum allowed by law, if you um would want to have what the percentage rate's going to be, anywhere from one to five percent, and then uh they're starting, she's starting with the REC's with these two draft agreements and then Stewart Municipal Utilities will follow, uh what's those are discussed and laid out, so it's just in in process, you, there's a timeline that's referenced on the August twenty-second email from Christine Stone and you can review that, drafts to the cops for the end of August, circulate revisions in September, potential form in either October or November, and this would also have three readings of coordinates with your option to wait the second and third readings if if you wish to, so that's that's really it, just wanted to let folks know where things are at, uh and glad to answer any questions. Mike, do you want to add anything else on?
Uh I
Do we need to go? It'll, you can, you could just re, just be sure to review that section of the agreements and it'll be on, I think, an action item in October, I haven't seen an updated version of the agreements.
Right, because this one's
This is the original.
Yeah, the original.
So I don't, Ash or Sarah, I don't think she sent any updates as that long.
I know during that meeting, we we discussed that, um that the city of Stuart would be like, there'd have to be a separate account for that.
Yes.
We worked that out on how that's all going to play out with the.
That'd be the second, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's We kind of brought that up and it was like, well, let's wait until we know.
What we're going to do first?
Yeah, yeah, okay. On that, so, but you had a question, I mean, sure. That's good, yeah, we talked about it, so.
Uh so did you get any other questions on that?
I don't think so.
We're good.
Thank you.
Should, I'll I'll hit V then.
Okay, nothing.
If you would, so I I think the cities have the TIP application from Dolly Holdings for a number of months and I I would just encourage the council to adopt and approve that and then if if you're of the mind to approve that, the city could, you could amend or renewal plan this fall sometime, uh it's a, it's a viable financial amount that'll work within the available TIP cash of the city, uh what's helped benefit that situation a little bit with the, the city's TIP cash flow is tied through the June thirty, twenty twenty-nine fiscal year, so the fact that there's not been any significant change orders during construction on housing one, base three, overall base four, that helps and I think we in place considering the existing debt. If there is any restructuring of existing debt that needs to happen, I think we can find a solution for that, that'll still be cost effective for the city, uh but and I'm not mad if you have any input on where this is at with seed, we'll just encourage the city to take, give the nod, I, knowing that it's not really a formal action, there'll be formal action on a permanent plan amendment at a, at a future meeting, so.
Well, I mean, I think everybody can see the benefit, uh you know, we have, this is Dolly that's opened up a shop already, took that over, rehabbed it, made it look nice and now we got to do it another store to make it look nice and again, I think that maybe makes all the buildings downtown inhabited and open one way or another, I I think so, you know, um and you know, that's, that's what we want for a downtown. So my personal view is I would not have any issue uh of moving this forward at this time.
I would like to ask if we could go ahead and take it before the bond even current.
I I would be good with that, too.
I would be too.
Now, urban renewal, that this would have to be added at a like, what, October or what?
You, I think you could could start the process at October, I think it formally be added in November, you you take action if if you're so inclined to proceed to uh Saturday for a public hearing on the urban renewal plan amendment, start that in October hopefully and then hold the hearing on the plan amendment in November.
Okay.
So.
And and I I don't want to get off topic, I want to do this for sure.
Sure.
Can you stay there for a second?
Yeah.
On that, so, um I would make a motion to move forward with this, send it to the ombudsmen committee.
I'll second it.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes. One question on the urban renewal thing.
You bet.
Um I've had some discussion with uh some people around town, they talk about maybe the city, uh we don't commit to anything, but just putting them in kind of as a placeholder like the American Legion's skin rig, can that be added in? I think that's, we've done it before, not, not with this council, but with another one, we just kind of put it in there and and that way you don't have to rehash and spend that, so um just keep that top of mind, you know, I think, you know, they've, they were around when I was young, so if we could try to help them, we're not committing to anything, we're just putting them in there so we don't have to do it.
You can add it as part of this plan amendment if you wish, and then it still would have to be solidified and formalized through future development agreement.
Okay.
So you can add it as part of the plan, just because it's in your plan amendment doesn't.
Doesn't mean anything, just means it's there.
It's there.
And we don't have to spend the money, I, you know, when we do it for uh for this one.
Exactly, that's right.
All right.
You got it. Uh well, I'll get the details on that.
All right.
In the future.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Are you gonna hang out for a little bit?
I will.
We might ask some questions here later on.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, I'm a financial advisor. Is an annual deposit submit to the state, close now the whole year, similar to the old years and yeah, we put all these uh that we summarize the fiscal year, we have any coaching that also and we need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Morgan, Adibak Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Ten human resource consultant proposal.
Council asked for more research and bids and Sarah did a good job on lending, bringing in all the information that she can obtain and sort of pull up a few and.
And how many years have we used and what we have?
Twenty years.
At the end, yeah.
Um I know, I I I thought, I have to go back and watch, but I know we'd ask for more information, but I I thought we'd also ask for a list of cities that they service also on that.
And she just provided that this morning, if I can get my fingers on it.
Okay.
I might have to print it off again, she actually provided a list of counties that she served because she thought that that was the most comparable.
And um so you reached out to EMC also to see if they could provide?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I reached out to them also and there's a whole list of services that they provide us, I can pass that down, I didn't make copies for everyone because there's this substantial amount, that's just like one page of every service that they could provide to us and uh I called our insurance agent and uh they also have a website that you can go out onto and and find more information and I'd like to know how are we utilizing them right now, because we already pay for the insurance.
It enabled last April.
Okay. It wasn't on the one prior, okay.
Just a missing.
Every three months.
For consultation.
Yeah, and then you have all this other stuff and and then it's hourly too, um but again, like I said, I'm not opposed to doing this, but I I just, I'm questioning the need to go out and get somebody else when we have this available to us, um what kind of, what kind of utilization are you looking at that we're going to do, how many employees is this going to cover? How many do we have that would be under this? Should we have everybody?
If we're a woman, we have fire handbook, we have rescue policy and procedure, we have police policy.
But not the utility, right?
You tell it on there.
Okay, that's intentional.
You tell it, you tell it to Shenwood's use a handbook and she will, if you get the same way, you should be working for the house. And you have a swimmer who has policy and procedure, you have a lawyer who has policy and procedure, uh those more into each other, you know, you can get someone this hour, you it, it's going to cost you hours, but if you have a flat rate, you will be working with a flat rate, excuse me, I can't talk.
Oh, you're, you're kind of in the same boat.
So that's really.
Sure. So I'm just going to throw it out there, you know, my my thing is that insurance that we're paying for, um we obviously haven't had a chance to utilize it, I'd like to see us utilize it, um and maybe when it comes around to budget, you know, if we've had issues, we can see how much it costs with the EMC, if it costs us anything, um and then revisit it for a flat rate at that time, but I I I don't know, for me personally, um I'll be honest, when we sat here and we asked, why are we doing this? The answer was, there's no reason. We all remember that, I hope we remember, when we asked, yes, somebody asked, why, I think it was down, maybe it was EDA, why are we doing this, I don't ask many, and she said, there's no reason.
Is there?
Yes, I think if I went back and looked at the thing, somebody said that, it wasn't one of us, it wasn't one of us, but but it's fine, but it was, there was no reason we were doing this and if there's no reason to do it, then I question why, not opposed to it, I just like that we're already paying for before we sign up, but uh and see how that goes, if it's something that we is okay, but we need more, or this other one will do something, then we could put it into the budget at that time, what would I free months away from that? And hopefully, I don't know, you know, we could get started on some stuff, you know, handbook rewriting, that's a big one, that's like, what, twenty-some years old, something like that.
Yeah, I think that would be the big one, like handbook policies, different things like that, if this is some, I mean, what we currently have, do they offer that? Because that's something that I think needs to get done and that's going to be a very timely process.
Yes, actually waiting for the council decision today.
That I don't know.
So is a rescue, do they need to argue that's policy and procedure?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're waiting for the council decision because he's sitting tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely don't think that that no was the, you know, we're talking about um doing things like adding health insurance and stuff like that, this is all HR stuff that could be run by them, you know, talking about hiring more people from my department, we don't even have a real hiring contract for people to use and that kind of stuff, so that's like, that was one of those things that, you know, we talk about like, oh, you bring a couple people on, well, I want to get some of that stuff sorted out first before we do that and I'm not the only one, you know what I mean, and and I think citywide, again, a handbook from twenty, thirty years ago, going through that, it's going to take hours and hours and if somebody's charging you two hundred and fifty, three hundred, five hundred dollars an hour from EMC insurance after ninety minutes, it's not going to take long, plus, you know, anytime something, you never know, next month, something could come up and then all of a sudden, you know, you got another sixteen thousand dollars you gotta spend because something happened with an employee and it could be anything, and so that's why I think it's it's important to have, you know, even if whatever EMC, I don't know, as far as the whole scope of what they would do, but I think that having somebody that the city can turn to that's specific for HR for all of these questions is is really important, even if today we didn't need that, we do, but even if it wasn't the case, I think that that's, you know, pretty important to have some somebody.
And again, I'm not opposed, I would just like to see us utilize something that we already have for the first and see how that goes. That's my opinion and that there is.
How does she bill, how does that company bill, does that do monthly or yearly or?
We just better have that three.
What, long song?
A long song, if you want, and she
I guess when we had a lawyer here all the time, it's eight hundred dollars flat fee and I called him, it added up to a lot of money, where this is.
Probably a curve down a little bit, maybe, you know, I mean, Dave, is that doable? Will we be getting anything?
They do.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Angie Capes, I have um some education in human.
Can you come up here right?
Yeah. So I would just like to share, as someone who's educated in HR, advantages a handful of teams, that our biggest resources are people and we have people that are nearing the end of their time, that we're going to be having people retire and I feel like retention and succession planning should be on your radar and I certainly wouldn't try to do that with an add-on service that you get a break on from an insurance company, I would encourage you all to make it a priority and say, our people matter and we expect to get what we paid for and if that is helping with a handbook minimally for a while, that is great, or if you need them because something out of the blue happens, you have them, I don't know if any of you are educated on how to learn a handbook, but I can tell you DIEV, a lot will take your time and is a huge liability if you don't do it right, so I would just encourage you that as you're having the conversation, is this a place where you would get what you paid for and is an insurance, I don't know how much paid EMC, but is that where you want to cut a corner or do you want to cut?
Well, I'll say, I don't think it's exactly cut in a corner, we have the responsibility to the citizens to to be financially responsible and to have that service and not utilize it, uh doesn't seem right to me, doesn't mean we can't come back to this at some point, but we haven't even tried this, we don't know what it's like.
My question, you say we have this service, we have ninety minutes a quarter and then they're going to charge us an unknown hourly rate, which as we know, you have to do, I mean, we're going to far exceed what, you know, this third-party service would provide us versus our insurance agent, our versus what our insurance agent is going to be charging us, so I mean, I I guess I'm seeing confusion there is what do we really have besides that ninety minutes is really just wrapping your head around the issue and consulting on it, one issue, you're pretty much done a quarter and you're not even, that means done with that without spending, you know, what, thirty-six hours over that one eighty someone else quoted us would be equal to her yearly rate and we know EMC is going to be more than that.
Sure, I have no idea what the rate is, I didn't get it, I didn't get it, she didn't give it to me, I didn't put it either, so I have no idea what that is, you know.
Maybe Corey was alluding to this, but um if we were to start now, do we pay, like for sixty-five hundred dollars, does that go up a hundred a year or do we go through?
Twenty months.
Oh, so it can start whenever and go.
So it's
I didn't know if it's
September to September.
I didn't know if we pay, yeah, till December thirty-first or whatever and then redo it again, so.
Twenty months and.
And we would, because it, because then my next question would be like, are we jumping on a bunch of these improvements and stuff like that?
You all lie on forever, if you got Ruby tonight, she'll get phone calls tomorrow to start work with us and most of the department is our excited, you all have pictures, you will have ideas about what you need and we'll start and that's what plus we're saying is, all I get from the insurance company is such a consultation, that if I call them for five minutes, that's one hour, if I go for ten minutes or fifteen minutes, that's two hours, so I get consultation, okay, I need a handbook, okay, good, we'll get you somebody to help us handle, here it goes, and I need him, so now we're going to be around the workers, that child, that's the biggest law firm in Iowa, the hourly rate is a hundred, four hundred dollars, you can imagine how much the difference is, I'm not obsessed about what assumption, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to, but that doesn't, I changed my recommendation, if you would like to do it, we If you would like to do it, we'd be working that firm for the last ten years. And it would be good that you have someone working for both. So you don't wanna do it, but I don't want it to be taken long. I said it was gonna have to.
Just a quick comment. I worked with that company all the time I was on the utility board. Ash, correct me if you think I'm wrong. But my guess was always that they saved us more money than we had to spend for.
So this is my recommendation. You don't have to, you don't have to take it all. That doesn't mean I'm saying we don't need. I'm being honest. We do need financial, of course, you're gonna be saving because the EMC is just giving me a consultation that I need a policy and procedure for fire. Okay, good. We're gonna get you a name for a lawyer, which is Blatcha, Fluffin. And they're gonna look at us on policy and procedure. You know how much you charge, one hour? What? That's kind of, two hours, karma, six hours. So my recommendation is if you would like to do that program, that firm is a good firm, reasonably priced. And all the department that, the department that's sitting here tonight are willing to work tomorrow to get things going and to save the city money. So if you would like to lose.
And protect the city and help the employees that throughout the whole city.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we go by Ash's recommendation for the sixty-five hundred.
Second, Patrick.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
No.
Okay, eleven, forty-seven, twenty-four, oh-two-C. Before we proceed on this, I don't know if everybody's read this completely as far as you had a question. More information on this?
I mean, I requested more information last week. I forgot. So this is just another, this is just a reading that you posted home from last week.
Are you talking about the, the big long ones?
Yeah. That's what anyone, they can find his table, huh?
Yeah, I, I say table, I just get that clarification.
Yeah, that's, if we, if they're going on too much, what do we have to go do to get that information?
Okay.
Is that a bike? I know. Where, where do we get more information?
Well, you, the PNC, you got a commercial person over here that has a forty-foot unit. I say, well, can you have them in a business area but not residential? I think there needs to be more clarification. Because we do have, I think, one at Selva, or their few come call, the real, or sergeant has one at her property. I think we need more clarification.
Well, I, I think the councilman, Russell's question was, he asked for it last time. We don't have that information though. It's like, how do we get that information? Because if we're just gonna sit up here and ask for stuff, we don't get it, it's just gonna repeat, roll over and roll over.
Can you offer a little direction? Like, can you ask me questions so I know exactly what I'm looking for?
Sure. I mean, like, from my perspective, you know, why, you know, they call out line item three, steel fabrication boxes, commonly known as storage or shipping containers, cannot be used as accessory buildings. You know, my question to that is, what is their justification? I mean, do they consider it ISOR? Do they not understand, you know, the differences between using that versus, you know, a prefab building or a rod or accessory building? You know, what is the, the reason for that?
Maybe what constitutes a steel fabrication box? I think there's.
Say sort of shipping.
Versus like a pot or something.
You know, as we know.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm good. I just was trying to get to the root of like, we asked for it, we don't have it.
Are you wanting like minutes from any meetings that we can find where it's ever been discussed or allowed?
Obviously, it's coming from PNC. So they got that meeting, so.
Like, we're a sergeant covering from PNC. We need to have clarification.
Okay, I can work on all of this.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Twelve, Stewart Economic Development Director, Matt.
There's a TIF application for one-one-two North Division Street. Prior City Council approved amending the earthing renewal for that. Dollar-wise, it's already been budgeted and allocated for. The applicants at that time backed out for whatever reason. So we have a new applicant that a new person has taken an interest in purchasing the building and has asked about the TIF. And that was Randy Oxley, and I had him fill out the TIF application. So I asked for that one to go before the bond council.
Yeah. Yeah. And just, everybody should be able to speed here. We had approved this, and was it originally?
Dudley, wasn't it?
Dudley, exactly. We approved it in Dudley. So this is just a, basically taking a name out, putting a new name in it, you know. And I mean, to have a longer yard back in Stewart and have this operating again, just like any other business. You know, we, we wanna have the stores filled up. So I'll make a motion to move this.
Can I ask one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at Chip and he's looking at me. I don't know if he's got something to say about this. And that's why I asked him to stay a little bit. I don't, I mean, we're gonna be pretty tight on our league.
It's gonna be awfully tight. And I, but I do think it'll work because you'll, you'll have some existing agreements that are falling off.
Okay.
And that narrow back allows it, that, that up to work. Plus, and Ash maybe doesn't want me to get into this too much detail. Ash has a pretty good amount of TIF cash on hand. And for the debt service that's paid by TIF, there's a pretty good balance in your debt service fund. So those are additional factors financially that'll make this work.
You, you got me a little nervous when we start talking about year twenty-nine. And, you know, when you said that more will come in. So when I seen this, I was like, ooh. And that's why I asked you, just stick around because we might have options.
You bet, you bet. I, I did check with that, with Chip before we're going through with this. And, but I do want to add, this was back when the Dudley's had plans for this. So this was a part of Chip's.
Those were all in the numbers. Ash already didn't figure it in the numbers, right?
Yes.
That's already to, it says it's already been figured into projections and stuff.
So I, I, I don't know if you'll need another, a real plan amendment for this or not. So you may not.
Might not, but we have a meeting next week. I think it was this week.
So we have tentatively set up a, a call already with the bonitaries endorsing waiting out for this Thursday, subject to your approval tonight for, to discuss these two items, the, the Dolly one and then this Arthur score.
Okay.
Okay. Talk, it's over, get some feedback.
Sounds good. Perfect. Sorry, I didn't. No, no. Oh, you're all right. I was just making a question. You're fine. I didn't make a question, you can ask. I made a question, go ahead.
Second, I know my knowledge. How do you have Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yes.
Okay. B.
Okay. Luis. Correct. Came here for the city council a while back and we agreed to to work him or let him obtain some property on the north seventh and LeParlant. And there came up a question about the zoning on that. And Jason Benaldell, the zoning administrator, had initially indicated that it would need to go before the PNC. And actual research had determined that it did not have to go before the PNC. You should have under the one-sixty-eight zero-four R's residential single-family district. And special exceptions, number five, some special exceptions are in there. And in that special exceptions, it's multi-family dwellings. Looking for your approval to proceed with allowing Luis to put multi-family housing in that section of land there.
Okay, do you know what's is right? I'm sorry. Is he looking at two flexes? Is that right?
Uh, four flex.
Yeah, four flex. So question is, if it's in our ordinance is already, do we even need to approve it?
Yes.
Is that, oh, okay. I'm just like, okay. Well, I'll make that motion.
Calvo.
I'll second.
Two, Patrick. Yes, Russell.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Calvo. Before we move off of this, Matt, got a question. Luis has taken another over here, handlers.
He's trying to, but that's running into some difficulties.
Do you know where we're standing with the lawyer on that? Did we hand it all over to Luis or the city completely out of it? You were really gonna tear it down? And we said, Luis can take the trailer.
So we were allowing Luis time to complete a private sale for the owner rather than having to step in.
Okay, okay. And I did talk to Katie. She says that when it comes time to you get the person, it just needs to go up to court and they'll have something.
She prepared to do that?
Huh? Yeah. Okay, I mean, Guthrie County will be involved in that. Then they'll just have to ask Cory to offer the problem. Okay, C.
Restricted powers.
Uh, yeah, so the restricted evidence for one-one-three should be in there. Added, Warren Riley had added in that the resident will be required to put in a gate if they're gonna put in a fence. To put gates, ten-foot gate over the easements. Have them up if they need to access the, you know, utilize the easements. So that was the evidence. So this should be the third time they've been before you. So that was the, the minor change.
Do we need council approval for that?
Yes. And then they can go on the accounting to be reported with the flat map.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Patrick.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thirteen, Dolly.
Hello. Um, thank you all so much for your time tonight. And while I'm up here, I just wanna say thanks to Planning and Zoning and Historical Committee for meeting with us on short notice in regards to our building located at one-two-three North Plus Second. Last Wednesday, when we met with them, we received a passing vote from the Historical Committee in regards to painting our building. But we, I'm here tonight to appeal the decision of planning and zoning and to request your permission to paint the exterior of the building. Um, in your packets, you'll see a photo that, or photos that we included of the paint swatch and the brick. Per code section sixteen, which states the color of building shall complement the adjacent building's colors. We believe that our request meets code. As you can see, the photos in the attached document, we chose a black color and it complements the colors of the adjacent brick, which is on the Stewart Harrell Building. I was told also by the former mayor that this specific black color was an option years ago when we did the whole facade agreement and changes downtown as well. So tonight, I'm here to ask for you to vote yes to appeal the decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be that design? Just the whole, it's gonna be solid color?
It's gonna be solid color. That's just a picture of what the brick looks like right now on the adjacent building. We just wanted to show up close that there are shades of black in the brick.
Okay.
So that it does coordinate.
And it's been set in for fifty years.
Right. Yeah, I, I heard somebody say that. And for as long as I can remember, there was nothing there.
No taxes.
No, yeah, nothing. And, and again, you know, we got people that are bringing business into town. You know, um, I, I, I understand everything, but, uh, what was PNC's? Why did they vote no to say?
I believe in their motion. It said something about painting on painted brick. And they didn't think that, that.
And you said you worked with some painting company that says the paint you use will not draw moisture.
Correct, yep. It's made specifically for concrete and masonry. It's what we used on Dodear. And that's held up really well.
I can believe, when this is a kind of topic, but I can, you know, as many times I drove by the Stewart Harrell, I've never paid attention to that brick color, I guess. You know what I mean? You go by these buildings and, you know, looking at it on the picture like, wow, there's one black in that. Has, um, and, and maybe you have, maybe you haven't. But have you talked to Christine? Just to get her opinion on, on anything or?
I haven't specifically talked to her yet. Um, we're not painting, like, we're painting just the, like, just our brick and not going onto her brick for the black color just because we didn't want to upset her. And I knew that that would be a source of contention. So we, I mean, we'll definitely have conversations with her prior to starting the paint.
It says in Chip's talking about proposed artwork on the west side.
We're planning to do a mural.
Well, I know we had a couple of people in support of it at the meeting, it looks like.
Yes, we did get a couple, I guess, folks from the meeting.
It talks about the history of the building. So what, and I know you probably want to say, anybody here can tell me more about the history besides it just being vacant for fifty years? What other?
It was an auto repair shop. It was a bank.
I know it was a church at one time.
Yes, and then we bought, when we purchased it, most recently that church.
Yeah. I can see if it was like the company or.
Yeah.
That might be a difference.
It was a First State Bank before they moved up here.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Waiting for my.
No. Well, this is Dolly. Here's, here's my two cents. Obviously, my wife's on the Historical Committee. But you met with her as well and we've had multiple discussions. The thing is, unfortunately, and I hate to say this, but, and I'm gonna stick my foot in my mouth, but we don't have anybody doing. You're doing the right thing. We're going through PNC, you're going through the historical preservation to take the right measures, the right steps. But, and I hate to say this, if you would've just done it and just asked for forgiveness later, nobody probably would've ever said anything to you. Because we do not enforce codes. There's a metal building uptown here that prior to pass, nobody enforced that. So to stop you tonight, I really can't say that I can't stop you tonight because of our past. At some point, we need to be consistent in what we're doing. We either enforce codes or we don't. So, I guess my opinion is why take it out on you? Because you're trying to do the right thing and you brought all this attention up and now we're like, oh, hey, no, can't do that. That's where I'm at with it. You guys all have your own opinions? My two cents.
I couldn't agree more, I think, I think you said that pretty well, you know, there's been other people, not just uptown, but in other places that have just gone. And what happens to them, not a whole lot, you know? So I'm, I'm on board with you.
I think there's gaps in our codes that we need to look at as a city council. I think things need to be, there's gaps that need to be bridged, whether we, work with the historical, the P and Z, whatever the case may be, that there are gaps and if you start reading the code, it's very gray. So to sit up here and tell somebody who wants to bring life to a, an old building.
Exactly.
I, I guess I can't do that.
You gotta consider what it's doing.
And what's the difference between that building versus any of the other buildings down there that have already been painted?
Right.
Why do we now put a stop on this one versus being allowed painting on other ones?
And, and I get that, and I'm not up here trying to undermine the P and Z. I'm not trying to do that because I, I feel like their jobs in this community are very important and we need to listen to them as well. But that's just my opinion. And she's gonna probably chew my rear end.
Don't put the box of gloves on.
So I was the chairperson for P and Z because Alpha had some family on the streets, I chaired both of the meetings. And I'd just like to get you guys in your lane. What is put in front of you is that bullet point number 16, the P and Z felt like the black did not complement the adjoining color. Reddine answered all of our questions on the paint type and we found that to be acceptable. She answered questions on the color based on the facade project and this exact color was included in the facade project. Um, in addition, she answered questions on the windows and the Historical Preservation Committee approved the artwork. So in front of you is not a question on what the artwork looks like. And I would encourage you to not undermine that committee. What's in front of you is does the paint color complement, I don't have it, does the paint color complement the adjoining building? There was nothing that said that, there's nothing that said that she needed to check with the neighbors. If you have to ask Christie, she could, but she doesn't have to. So I would just say that I feel like you're getting kind of off. I agree, Councilman Kirkpatrick, that we've got some ordinances that are followed. But I think our job is to compare it to what we have in front of us right now and then let's do the work after the fact to change them or enforce them or whatever it may be. So Warren gave us this speech at P and Z, I didn't necessarily design this myself. I just, he's not here, I just wanna be sure that you're sure that we're focused on the ball right now and that we're not kind of making it gray around where we can and can't go on this particular. Thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Thanks, Angie.
Okay, so once again, the color was approved for this facade thing, right? So, while some people might not think it complimented, evidently other people did at one point or was gonna be allowed, so. Nobody else can do that, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this.
Okay. Say it, my Morgan.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sully. James. Morgan.
Yes.
Cobble.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Garbage Collection Service South Summit is.
Yes, thank you.
Introduce yourself.
Absolutely, well, thank you for inviting me, my name's Myriam McCallan, I'm representing, um, the building at South Summit. We've been having issues with finding a lot of trash and that does not belong to the building. We have packed photos of people dumping, um, we've had messages from the tenants indicating that somebody came to dump. Um, it's really difficult because we do not have cameras, we don't have rights to the post at the city. We have sent someone over, um, but there was a conflict between putting up cameras because of not having the rights to that post. Um, so the solution that might work, um, possibly trail cameras, um, educating the tenants. Um, I know I've had several conversations with members, um, regarding if solutions when we don't have cameras, because we don't have access to electricity. All our tenants have, um, the electricity, so, um, let me know if that would be an option, um, for trail cameras other than educating the tenants.
Because right now, Myriam, the city collects $456 per month, 32 units of 1425, and it's just supposed to be residential garbage and what Abby keeps saying is every time you empty the dumpster, then somebody brings in the shingles and everything else, construction debris, and then that amounts a lot of extra.
Absolutely.
Dumpster fees were, what, what is, Jim, what is 90, 95 dollars?
Yes, 95 percent.
But like I told you earlier, I, I mean, in this picture, you've got a camera, which I know that's a dummy camera. But anyway, I would suggest, uh, go ahead and buy a trail camera that hooks up to your phone. The one I have is 24/7, somebody walks past, there's a picture right there. If somebody stole the camera, you still got a picture of who took the camera, but mounted up high and then it, every few seconds, it's taking picture day and night.
Um, I like that and I've written that down as a solution. I've already spoken to my maintenance guy to be able to execute that. Um, we were thinking one at the, a camera at the north, at the south, and then two in the middle.
Yeah.
Um, to see if we could get more, because we do have, we pay extra just to have another person going into our property to collect extra trash twice a month. Because we get tires, because somebody left the bed, because we have additional junk. Um, so it's very costly for us as well, um, so I know how expensive trash can be.
So maybe Sarah can send out, too, we've got a sticker program and it'll tell your residents exactly what a couch, a chair, whatever, we don't take tires, refrigerators or stuff like that, but if you put stickers, you will pick them up, there's only stickers per couch, per mattress or whatever, which might help relieve you.
Fantastic.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, on that sticker, is, is there something that tells them, like, if you got a couch, it's gonna be five stickers? Or how do they know how many to put on, like a mattress or something?
Yeah, like, I mean.
It says it in our book. If someone wants to call, we'll give them that information.
Okay, I did, I did, no, just like.
And sometimes if someone says, I just got tiny garbage on a curb I want gone, we'll call Scott and we'll try to find what's on the stickers.
Okay, so that, that is available, so.
Sadly, it's almost been trained that a lot of people are starting to leave trash by the garage. So we actually have someone that goes to pick up trash on the lot to dump by the garage. And then twice a month, we have somebody that picks up whatever is piled up there. So that's been our short-term solution, just because we've had so many, um, problems with this.
I'll, I'll show you here.
Are you saying like non-residents?
Yes, non-residents.
See that picture of like used motor oil?
Are there any signs of?
Um.
Like, uh, just.
Fine for illegal dumping, but they know there's dump cameras.
Right, so the issue continues because we don't have cameras. We sent somebody over to try to install cameras in the past, however, we don't have access to electricity there. Um, so it's just, we, we just collected ourselves.
You can also get cameras and you can get add-on little solar panels you can put up there that'll constantly keep you charged too.
And I think that's what, um, yes, yes.
They, you can get ring, like actual security cameras that are totally, um, solar panel, solar.
So you actually have to install some way to put them up, correct?
Right, because you don't have.
You can't put it on the pole, so you have to have that.
Yes, so I had a conversation with my maintenance guy, his solution was to put something at the north and south entrance and then something in the middle, because the middle seems to be where we have a lot of issues.
And we do have, uh, every spring, I don't know the date, you will.
The town plan.
The town plan where you can hear a mass of abuse.
Yes, and like I said, the tenants, I mean, they have, it's not the tenants collecting this much trash every month, twice a month. It's other people coming into our property and dumping. And I think, I mean, we haven't really done anything about putting cameras, so the, the issue just continues.
But I encourage you to go ahead and send a letter to all your tenants and say, residential garbage, that's just what you, in your house, your cans, diapers, stuff like that. Well, Scotty, Abby says there's a lot of shingles and stuff like that, cannot be hidden.
Yeah, and, and that wouldn't come from them though.
Right, we're not.
They're not shingling.
Well, unless, unless there are people at apartments, that's what they do for a job.
Or something.
That's what they're doing for a job, I don't know.
I do. I, yeah, I don't know, I mean, it could be, you're right, it could be anything, but I, I don't.
But, uh, if, if you go ahead and send your tenants notices, it's supposed to be on the residential garbage, possibly put up a ring camera, trail camera or something. And we'll ask Abby if the tonnage goes down.
Get the information from, uh, Sarah about the sticker program.
Okay.
And you put it in the flyer, hey, you know, this is who you call, this is what they are for and stuff. And it'll have that information, like if you have a couch and so many, you know, and then they'll, they'll. To.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna talk about the mowing at our city. At the cemetery North Oak, I've had complaints. A lady walks the cemetery every single day and she's complaining about the cemetery. Larry Knolf has the flat stones, he's complaining to me about his stones. Mick Ashgren's son-in-law went out, they went out to put flowers on at Mick's birthday and he said he weeded around the whole area and you can see the pictures before and after. And he said, he wants to let them know that he's done this numerous times. In Mick's stone. And I, I live right next to property, I walk the cemetery once or twice a day. I see a lot of areas are not getting weeded. One guy, I was at my campsite and he had to move the grass apart so he could see the stone. And Steve James' property, he'd been complaining on and off to Ash and myself near the transformer path, near the trees, and I think it just got weedy this other day. Long Walk Park, near the poles, there's a whole bunch of stuff, branches near the trees where the parking poles are. Aquatic Center, Shell told me that she had to bring her own weed eater and do it this summer. So I don't know what the answer is. I had, I showed a picture of, uh, Morrisburg Cemetery where Cory takes care of it. Yeah.
I would just like to say that if, um, in years past, we had the cemetery committee that whenever, whenever there was complaints or anything like that, it wouldn't be the city council's responsibility. I just would like to say that if we still had a cemetery committee, that this wouldn't be wasting our city council's time and energy for something like this when it could just be the volunteer people that were doing the, the cemetery committee that could, could speak with these complaints, to speak with, or to do all these sort of things. And then it wouldn't be wasting time at a city council meeting. I think that having a cemetery is an extremely vital thing, um, coming from people who are probably in the cemetery more than anybody in this whole entire community. Um, a cemetery committee is extremely needed and it could, we could all, you guys could all be at home right now if we have a cemetery committee. Because those complaints, Mayor, you could've came to the cemetery committee with those complaints and the cemetery committee could've handled the situation.
And I just talked to Mike the other day and I said, yes, we need to get that committee up and going.
Well, I'm just letting the council know that, you know, if it could become a thing again, stuff like this wouldn't rest on your shoulders. I think quite frankly, this, the city council has a heck of a lot more important things to worry about than the mowing at the cemetery.
But just so the council knows, I did talk to Mike, he said he went out to Fairview and set 65 stones in two days. He worked till 11:30 at night doing that for $7,000. I went out to the cemetery with my brother, walked all around there, he's gonna do a history tour of that and about every stone is set up there. Morrisburg, there's very few stones that are down that cemetery. And I would encourage that we could get Mike to go ahead and sometime to reset a lot of our stones for us. Yes. Jim?
Mike and I are in the process of.
Okay.
And then something else on your complaints at cemetery, if we follow chain of command, if you have complaints, if you take them to Ash, Ash passes them to me, I contact the contractor that's doing the mowing. That's the proper step that should be followed.
And that was even so with the cemetery committee.
That's correct.
I, I.
And I know when we, we spoke, uh, was that Thursday at last? No, it's, it's two weeks ago.
Just, just the other day.
Yeah, Thursday, uh, but, you know, when you stopped me out there in the cemetery, you know, I'd already been in seven other cemeteries that day, seven monuments, and, and that was everywhere from Walnut to Coon Rapids, to Greenfield, to back to Stewart again, you know, we go all over to save Iowa. And I think my comment to you, uh, Mr. Mayor, was that out of all of those cemeteries I was in that day, Stewart by far is the best cemetery that I was in. It's mowed, uh, yes, certain sections, the grass was a little bit taller as far as around the stones. But you know, with a particular contract that was written, it doesn't state, it says every other time, which simply means if I'm the only contractor, I could basically mow the south side of this, or I could mow the whole entire cemetery, but trim the south side one time and north side the next time. There's no specific language in that contract by law stating I have to trim the whole entire cemetery at, at one time. You know, you wouldn't have to do that, you would if there was specific language in there. But really, out of those seven cemeteries, that by far was the best one that I've been into.
We've set probably 15 stones out in that cemetery. Um, spring, summer, fall, um, probably more than that actually, to be honest. And I can honestly say that we've never once had any issues with the grass being too high when we're trying to set a, a stone. So, you know, I, I, I just would like the council people to take that into consideration. If the grass was too high, it would be, quite frankly, it would be extremely difficult to dig that grass out to, in order to put a monument, uh, foundation down, and we've never had that issue.
Mike, you never did get back with me, how many stones do you think are down?
We went out there yesterday, actually, took pictures of every single one.
And we're getting together with Jim too.
Okay.
Uh, we either spoke Friday and, and we're gonna get together and work through the cemetery. You know, and I wanted to touch base with you too, uh, I re-looked at my numbers on, on Fairview and Rockford Cemetery. There were 68 stones and not all 68 required the same thing. So, you know, it depends on what you guys wanna do with the cemetery, and that's something that Jim and I will work together on. Uh, because when you go into a particular. Due to weather, due to, not every stone is gonna take the same amount of work, so, you know, there are cemeteries down in, in Kansas City, uh, Palewood, Kansas, Lewisburg, you know, those surrounding areas that I maintained yearly and every one of them did something different. Now, the Catholic Garch Dicees, when they said, okay, we want these stones re-levelled, we want these reset, we're gonna have you shut down your entire operation, we're gonna have you come in, we $30,000, they don't, they, they didn't care. However, you know, some of these other cemeteries, you know, they're on a budget, like these rural county cemeteries, they're on a budget. Where, you know, what we'll do is we'll go in and they'll say, hey, we got $2,500 bucks this year for you to work with. Go to town and we'll go out there and the next year, same thing, next year, same thing, kinda like Morrisburg. You know, you, you're at it every year, I've been back on. You know, you go at it, pretty soon the cemetery's looking perfect. You know, you don't have to really throw a lot of money at it all at one time, you could do it gradually and people will see that you're updating and you're trying to get to where you want to be. For that, that golf cart out there yesterday, and, not yesterday, but. It was yesterday, I'm, I'm losing track of my days. But anyway, we drove out there yesterday and I, I jumped off and I looked, I'm like, holy smokes, where'd you start? You have, you know, you got stones going every which direction, you got some of them parallel, some of them vertical, some of, a lot of them over. I would say there's probably 50, 60 that are, that are over, you know? More than half of those are gonna need to be re-levelled, uh, as Jim and I know, even in order to put the top back up. You can't put the top back up on the foundation and, and the base of it's like this, you know? But most of them, it really doesn't cost that much because you can re-level.
Can I interrupt for a second? Um, I know we've, we're kinda getting into the details, what needs to be done, that's fine, we can do that. Um, just so the council knows, we're kinda talking about two separate issues, talking about downstones and mowing and not to, I just wanna clarify it, I don't think you're indicating that all of the downstones were caused by the mowing.
No, 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 no.
I just wanna be clear for everybody up here, because we kinda got it. Yeah, kinda got it, put together there. One thing, I, I am kinda concerned, I, I, I get the mowing, I wholeheartedly agree with the cemetery committee. You know, we were all in a, in a tizzy to get it disbanded and this is kinda what happens, you know? Uh, our mowing contractors not even here to talk about it. And we're talking about performance in an open meeting. Kind of touching it up, you know? I don't know if our city administrators received any complaints directly. I, I don't know, does it, does it, or if he's had a meeting with our mowing contractor? We don't know any of this and we're trying to discuss this. What I would like to see, what Katie and Mike, Jim, I would love to see that cemetery committee come back, because they. What I would like to see, what Katie and Mike, Jim, I would love to see that cemetery committee come back because they did a fantastic job. Takes it off of our plate, they dealt with the complaints, they got the complaints. They can make recommendations. They're just like the historical committee or any other thing. They're not a decision-making body. They make recommendations. And I don't know, I think we kind of got lost on that when they disbanded, and this, they were coming up to make recommendations, and that was it. So if any decision is wrong, people don't need to go chew their butts, they can come up to chew ours.
So Mike and Katie, would you be willing to get another committee? I know you said you got kicked in the shin, Mike, you told me.
You know.
To be honest, I would. I don't know if you're going to get him back on it. If, you know, it was very gut-wrenching when it got disbanded the first time because Mike poured his heart and soul into that, and he has poured his heart and soul into all the cemeteries around here for years and years and years and years. And so it was kind of a kick in the rear when, you know, you guys, not you guys, everybody took down that cemetery because it was, you know, one way that Mike could help ensure that our cemeteries are staying well-groomed, well-maintained for not only our loved ones that are out there, but everybody's. I think that the cemetery committee is something that needs to be redone, and so I would be more than happy to try to get one going again and try to persuade somebody to join with.
So what, what, how we need to do it since it's disbanded? Do we need a motion to reinstate a cemetery committee? Make an appointment? And I don't know, can they, could, if she wants to do it, let's say you appointed her, we approved her, would she be able to go out and, and, and get volunteers? Or would they have to come up here and come to you to be appointed? How would that work?
I think they just make a committee. But I don't think we need to make a motion on it.
I don't think you can make a motion on something that's not on the agenda. So I think that she's got a great plan, but I think if you make a motion and it's not on the agenda, those that oppose it could come back and say, she, she.
But it's not, and it's not something that needs to be done today by anybody, but I just want everybody to.
They come to the next week.
Yeah, kind of. Let's think of that, and, you know, if that's something that the council is interested in, then.
They just come up with a list of, who's enlisted, they come and get the mayor, the mayor appointed to me.
I think we get back to mowing contract services.
Can I add one, one more thing before you start? I, I do want to say that, you know, I, I know this community inside now. This year was the first year ever, well, last year Cory took care of it, we didn't have any complaints either. But this year, we had, me personally, I heard nothing from anyone, which was very, very unusual because when something happens out there, the first person they're going to call is Jim or myself. I don't know, did you hear? Did you have any complaints?
I agree with you, Mike, because I think we had a meeting, and I don't know if it was else that we had not received any complaints on the cemetery. So to suddenly hear tonight that we have all these complaints is shocking to me, you know.
And there was, we never had any, anybody call up to the funeral home and say, hey, our stone was nudged or it's off or anything like that. You know, in years past, we, we responded to a lot of those calls, but. Memorial Day, I dread Memorial Day, to be honest with you, I'm busy enough. So when it comes to people calling me about, hey, somebody ran the, or, you know, this wasn't done or that wasn't done, there was zero phone calls, which was kind of nice for us, so didn't, didn't hear anything.
So maybe right at this point, we leave everything as it is, and then, you know, Jim alluded to it, you know, it's followed the chain of command where any complaints would go through Ash and then filter down that way properly until such time as a committee could be formed. A new cemetery committee could be formed, and they can.
Can I make a comment? I have a positive note on mowing. Jim has done an excellent job on Eagle Park. It looks sharp. And you drive past and take a look at that.
That's Josh, not me. That's old farm now, so Josh Rizzo's the one that mows it.
It really looks good.
Order, there's a compliment for our mowing company. Out there usually weekly.
Okay, so you got it on this? Public Forum, Bakers Night, Chambers, says Thursday, October 31st, downtown, 5 to 7, residential, 6 to 8. And then, can you give us an update, Jim, on the whiteboard?
That's, yeah, I forgot it earlier. Guthrie County is here doing the track filling, but they just, they're going to the east now. They will go clear out two Roy and St. Sardons. According to Josh Seaburn, county engineer, the section through town, I mean, they're having to go further to get the materials than they anticipated because they were going to get them from the Highway 25 plant, but they changed aggregate size, so it's too big, so they've got to go to Grimes Asphalt in the northeast corner of Moin to get materials, so that's extending the time that they had planned to do this. But Josh said nonetheless that they will, they'll get it finished up. So that's where we're at on that. One of the, I talked to Ash about earlier, wasn't on the agenda, but just so you're aware of it, our street sweeper is in Moin, Anthony, had it hauled in to have them do an inspection and figure out, you know, where we're at. The machine itself is worth about $5,000 the way it sits. The estimated cost of repairs, parts and labor is $52,000. It's the parts that it needs is $52,000.
As far as the tow bill to get it there was two grand.
Yes.
What's it, have you locked it up?
It weighs $15,000.
What's it, used or new one?
A new one? Hold on to your hat. A new one is $285,000.
Forget that, used.
Yes.
Ruined, you can wipe me.
But they do have some used equipment available. I've been in contact with the salesman. Probably have to meet up with him on Thursday, and just, you know, see what's available, see what the numbers are, and then Ash and I can.
Will they take that one in on trade?
Yeah.
They will?
Yeah. About what it's worth. I mean, honestly. But just, just a heads up, that's.
Jim or Mike, can you give us any update? Do you have any update on the grant we're doing this one project? Was there anything going on yet?
I haven't heard.
I talked to Josh. When I talked to Josh, he said that with this being an election year, that might kind of get pulled out just a little bit.
How about the RDS, did they dig anything over there yet?
No, they have not. That is, last month, you guys approved change order number one, and that was for that particular site. They will remove the manhole, they will do a point repair down by the telephone office. So basically, they'll have to dig down to the main, cut a section out, rebuild it. And then they'll shoot a liner through there. Right now, they're checking with the liner manufacturer to make sure that that liner is compatible with hydrocarbons. When I talked to, that's what they told me, that they had to make absolute sure that it was compatible with that. Right now, my plant is in very, very bad shape because these hydrocarbons, my plant is operated on bacteria. Bacteria breaks down the waste. These hydrocarbons are killing my bacteria. So I have been, since the 20th of August, I've been seeding my plant with, with bugs, with bacteria to try and bring it back to anywhere near complacency, which right now it's not. I am out of compliance, just filed the DNR report over the weekend, and haven't heard anything from them yet, but today's Monday, so I'm sure, and that's where it's coming from, yes.
We need to move it forward. I know we can't discuss anything, but we need to buckle down on that. Somebody needs to probably pay for something.
Contacted with Seneca and with DNR and with the underground tax people, yeah. It's, yeah, it'll be an uphill climb.
Thanks for doing your homework on that, because we're going to have to have further discussion.
Yeah. Yep. So I agree with you.
Since it's nice weather, how long can you keep the compost area open?
I normally keep it open until the first Saturday in December to get through leaf cleanup and, and everything like that.
Whenever did you get a second person to, to mow if he's sick or?
Nope. So far, so good. Have that idea, I guess. Yeah, it'll be, that'll be December, normally, first weekend in December.
Did you guys have anything else?
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. With Bakers Night, is there any reason we don't work with the Chamber to?
That's who, that's who just.
Well, I mean, to establish this is the way it is every year, we don't change that. I didn't quite catch everything you were saying.
You do change it every year.
That's a good point. Why can't we just make it?
Yeah, it's always a state, a lot of communities do that, it's always a state, doesn't change. We actually had someone look it up. There's only two states that really change their hydro sign every year. Every other state in the U.S.
I never make the announcement, the Chamber does. I live in the Chamber. It's usually all you call.
Because that question's bothering me, I'm like, well, I'll ask when I go to Chambers and make that recommendation.
Anything else?